We'll now move on. We're going to go to nine point O and tonight is the first reading of the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one general fund operation budget. And Board, this is for information only, as you know. Yes, if y'all want to leave, you don't have to stay, but you're more than. You can stay, you can leave, you can stay a little while and then leave, whatever you want to do. We we're so glad to see faces, if you want to know the truth. Our last four or five meetings, we've only had just us. So we're so glad to see y'all. Yeah, thank you. No, we appreciate y'all coming. Thank you. So at this time, Board, we're going to go to nine point O, which is the first reading of the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one proposed general fund operation budget. As you know by law, we have to have several readings of this budget so that not only that we understand it, but that our community understands it. And to be honest, things are sort of in flux right now with all that we've got going on in the world. So and Mr. Salters is going to explain a little bit of that. So we're going to hear about that. So Mr. Salters, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Good, okay. All right. Well, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I, as you mentioned, we're going to do the first reading of our proposed general fund budget for two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one.
Let's just make sure Ms. Garrison, Dr. Guyton can see this. Ms. Garrison, can y'all see the the presentation? I can't see them. They can. Okay, great. Okay.
All right, thank you. And normally, we would be at this meeting, usually in this time of year, we would be doing a second reading of the budget. And but given the the state of the coronavirus, it hit right around the beginning of our budget timeframe and we would have normally done a first reading in April and and moved forward. But we wanted to push our budget process out just a little bit to see if the state would be making any changes and and what they were doing. And so we're here tonight for first reading. So I'm going to do my best to not pass out and talk through this with a mask on. So here we go. I'm good. If I can get, if I can get the clicker to work. All right. You're going to have to click, I guess, Josh, because it's not. All right. So the, just to recap for you, when we're talking about a general fund budget, mainly, these are the operating expenditures for the district. So, you know, this budget lays out our expected revenues and and expected expenditures on the operations side of our budget. So that's salaries and utility costs and different things like that. And I want to contrast that with our, Josh, go ahead. With our capital funds that we get questions about from time to time. Our capital funds focus primarily on funds that are restricted by law or bond covenants. And and these funds are designated for our major building projects. You know, two thousand and eighteen, our voters passed a three hundred and sixty-five million dollar bond referendum. That's an example of capital funds that we use. And those are used for buses and library books and things like that as well. So but they cannot be used to pay for the day-to-day utilities and associated costs that the general operating fund can be used for. So we looked at a number of considerations for the budget as we began the development of this, and we spent a lot of time through this process. But we do anticipate some funding shortfalls in this upcoming year. And, you know, although the General Assembly recently passed a continuing resolution for next year, we don't really know the extent of the of the shortfalls. What that continuing resolution basically means is that they are going to fund us at the the same level next year as they did this year until they reconvene in September and potentially make some adjustments to the budget based on the economic outlook and revenue forecasts for next year. When they come back in September and and, you know, make their recommendations, that does not mean that we could not yet still see another mid-year budget cut. We've endured those over the years, a number of different times. And so we're trying to be very fiscally responsible and conservative with the development of this budget in anticipation of of something like that happening, given the the state of the economy and the unknowns related to COVID nineteen and and how it may play out, you know, over the next fiscal year. So we anticipate coming back to you sometime in the fall after the General Assembly has done their work and do some kind of budget amendment to to make adjustments for whatever additional revenue that the state decides to send our way, if any, they may tell us to hold, hold where we are. Additional considerations that we we looked at in this budget. Really want to make sure that that folks understand that we're focused on quality education and Lexington One and and supporting our students and staff as they as they go through, you know, what we're enduring right now and also hopefully when when we get them back in our buildings, you know, later later on when it's appropriate. Currently, there is no salary or step increases included in the in the budget at this time. That's obviously due to the state's continuing resolution being done and no additional funding being provided. The proposed budget is designed to provide for student growth. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. We still have students coming into our district. We don't get to put up the no vacancy sign just because of the continuing resolution. Our our budget does meet state and federal requirements and also inflationary costs that are due to us every year. I would point out, too, you may hear some questions from your fellow board members across the state, or some of them may say, hey, we passed a continuing resolution, just like the state did. You know, why isn't Lexington One passing a continuing resolution? Why are we having budget hearings? Well, in this district, we have a lot of things going on. And so, Josh, if you'll advance, you can see these priorities for for the upcoming school year. We're opening Centerville Elementary School. We're restructuring Gilbert Elementary and Gilbert Primary Schools in that opening process. We're also relocating Pelean Middle School. We're opening a college center at Gilbert High School. And we're also preparing for the unknown impacts from COVID. So it wouldn't be prudent for us to pass a continuing resolution because we have new, new things going on in our budget that we have to account for. We have a school opening in the fall and then one opening in January. So we've got to provide for those those differences. And therefore, it's appropriate for us to do a budget with hearings and go through that process. Joshua, go ahead. I mentioned growth earlier. And if you look at our average daily membership for this school year, we grew five hundred and eight students at the one hundred and thirty-fifth day, which is kind of the the cutoff day that the state measures by. We're projecting some five hundred and twenty-seven additional students next year in in growth. We did a little exercise just because we were curious about the impact of a potential economic recession and how that might affect our growth during the upcoming year. Certainly, we don't know what the virus impact will be on the growth, but we can tell you that back in oh seven, oh eight, oh nine timeframe, when we had the last significant economic event, those were some of actually our highest growth years in recent history. We actually were in the seven, eight hundred student range of of new enrollees during that timeframe. So we we don't anticipate at this time that impact to be, you know, too significant for us as far as new students coming in.
And Mr. Salters, is that because of homeschool and private schools, kids coming back to public school? Or just, do you think people moved into the district? Or hard to say?
I I think it's it's primarily folks moving into the district. And, you know, there is some of the homeschool, private school scenario where folks coming back in or re-enrolling. But I think primarily, it's folks moving back into the district. And so and we'll track that closely with with home sales and things over over the course of the year. I did want to mention, too, that we have, it's approximately eight hundred and forty-seven three and four-year-olds in the district at the one hundred and thirty-fifth day of that two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty number there. So, you know, that actually made the the enrollment twenty-seven, three fifty-four, if you count those three and four-year-olds. So we're well over twenty-eight. I would anticipate us being well over twenty-eight thousand at the one hundred and thirty-fifth day with total students served at the one hundred and thirty-fifth day next year. So taking a look at the proposed staffing changes. Just remember that I just said we're going to grow, you know, over five hundred students. What we're proposing to do is to do some restructuring of our ratios at the elementary level. We would add a a student per classroom in kindergarten through second grade. And again, we we've worked since Dr. Little's been here, we've worked on an initiative to try to reduce those numbers pretty significantly. And so this puts the numbers back in the, at the at the kindergarten level, it would be twenty-three to one. First grade and second grade also twenty-three to one. So that's up from twenty-two to one where they are this year. But you can see by doing that, we actually will lose six FTE at the elementary level. And then at our middle and high school level, our human resource department, Mr. Stacy, has has worked really hard with our secondary principals to come up with an FTE model that that allows them some flexibility to to move staff to where the needs, the highest needs are. And we do have kind of a bubble of students matriculating up through our 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 growth in in some of our schools, and that's happening at the middle and high school level. And so some of those FTE are shifting that way, and that's why you see the five and a quarter there and the point seven five at the high school level, additional FTE. We do have some growth in our special needs population, and so we've got a seven point five FTE there. We have one additional instructional support staff. And then we have nine additional instructional support staff for special needs. These are not actually new positions. These are positions that we are picking up from the IDEA. We're supposed to be funded at the federal level for IDEA about forty percent. We're actually funded at about fourteen percent. And that ratio is really declining, or that percentage is declining. We're having to pick up more and more staff through those funds. And so they're they're moving to general fund. We have two school administrative staff that we are reducing. And basically, we have two assistant principals that through some moves and changes are not, those positions are not being filled in going, leading into next year. Supplements, additional days and temporary salaries. We are, we have some additional supplements that are that are in the budget currently related to our athletic supplements that were an initiative that was started four years ago now. And we, it was supposed to be a three-year phase-in, and in year three, we split that and into two years. And this is the second year of that last phase-in portion. So it would be a four-year. Those supplements had not been addressed in in over twenty years when we started that process. So that that makes up the fifteen and a half additional FTE and the seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars to this to the staffing. Thank you, Josh. Looking at our programs and services, this is what we affectionately call the accounts payable side of the house. And so we are budgeting an additional three hundred thousand dollars in unemployment compensation reimbursement. This is really a direct impact of COVID nineteen. We currently budget about seventy thousand dollars in this account, and we had spent about eight thousand of those dollars to to date. We are a reimbursable employer for unemployment. And so and when folks file a claim, we end up having to reimburse. We don't have unemployment insurance. And that's that's how our our setup is structured. And so we've gotten some initial information that indicates that based on the claims that have been filed, we anticipate that reimbursement going up pretty significantly. You know, and and so this is an area that we potentially can offset some some revenue through the CARES Act and some of the other programs that are coming out. And so right now, we were showing this as a as an increase, but eventually, we may be able to to offset these dollars by some federal revenue related to COVID nineteen. But we're we're still working through that. Safety and security. This is primarily related to the state gave us this year some additional resource officers, which was great. However, they only paid for the salary of those officers. And we have to provide in our, under our agreements with the municipalities that we work with, the, we have to provide the equipment and cars, you know, bulletproof vests, et cetera, for the for those officers. And so this this provides that equipment. It also anticipates a three percent salary adjustment for our current SRO staff. We are monitoring the town and and county budgets to see what they end up with, and we may be able to reduce, you know, that amount should those salaries not increase by that amount. So we're going to keep an eye on that in future readings. Our employee assistance program, this is a new program that we are looking to offer our our employees. This is an effort spearheaded by our human resource department. And Mr. Stacy and his staff have done a really good job of identifying another way to to help benefit our employees by providing a access to a mental health program. And so we're, we're pleased to be able to incorporate this in the budget and certainly feel there are a lot of of needs in our communities right now and with our staff, you know, mental health and financial health are all very important at these times. And so we're, we're very interested in providing this this assistance to our employees. Additionally, I mentioned previously about, you know, some ongoing inflationary costs. Workers' comp premium kind of falls into that. We, we have a premium adjustment next year based on our activity to date, and so that that's reflected there. So our total increases are the six eighty-seven, nine sixty. Looking at some decreases in in the budget, we, our senior leadership team and our principals really worked very hard, and our our finance staff worked really hard looking through the budget, finding ways to to really tighten our belt as much as possible in preparation for the unknowns of of this coming year. And so we made some cuts in in some key areas that are reflected here, maintenance and repairs. This is a reflective cut from each of our schools. We feel comfortable with this cut, given the the work that's being done through our referendum now at each of our schools. And so we feel, we feel like this will be okay. Technology supplies, again, we have some funds in our referendum to earmark for, that were earmarked for technology, and we feel like we can, we can work through that. Our school allocations, we cut that by by ten percent. You know, and and taking over this role as CFO for the district. One of the things that that I wanted to do in in looking back and working with our finance team, we look back at, you know, things that haven't changed in our our division for a long time. And this is one of the things that has been structured in such a way for, I'd say, probably over twenty years, where we have given the same allocation amount out to each school based on their enrollment. What we attempted to do this year was make some adjustments to to that allocation amount, that multiplier, using the Consumer Price Index as a guide. And and we will continue to do that. Basically, we're increasing that multiplier each year by the Consumer Price Index because we know that that, you know, roll of toilet paper twenty years ago doesn't cost what it does today. And maybe that's not a good example because toilet paper's like gold right now, right? But anyway, I was actually a Mother's Day present for my wife. So side note, it was a big hit. So anyway, we we've looked at that, and I did get her some other stuff, by the way. And so we looked at that, and and we we've made attempts to do that this year, but we still have have recognized a cut in the overall school allocation. We've also cut supplies. And this is a a pretty big cut, and this includes central services. Our individual divisions taking a pretty big hit on supplies. And, you know, this is one of those things that we're going to be shifting some expenses, some things we have been buying, we're not going to be buying anymore, and some things that we haven't been buying, we're going to be buying a whole lot of. You know, I I got hand sanitizer on on my mind right now, and I think we're going to be buying a whole lot of that in the in the fall. So additionally, travel, we've reduced travel across the district pretty significantly. We just don't anticipate professional development being being delivered in the same ways in the fall as it is currently. And so we're, you know, we've taken a reduction there. Staff Services International Visitor Exchange Program. One of the things that we did in in, as I transitioned in this role and worked with our finance team, and we went through and looked at basically every account in in our general fund and said, let's look at a budget to actual and where where are their funds out there that have not been, that have been budgeted, that haven't been expended over the course of a few years? This particular area, as well as the people transport area, were two areas where we consistently had had some excess funds. And so we went in and and reduced those those budgets to to better reflect the current expenditure levels for those those programs. So it doesn't mean we've cut the International Exchange Visitor Program. I don't want anybody to think that. We we still have the the money to do that. And that is a program that helps with our onboarding of our our international exchange teachers, many of which teaching our immersion programs, which are really strong in our district. So and we certainly are still transporting pupils around the district. But that was just some excess funds that we we had identified. So total decreases about one point, you know, one point five eight million dollars. Another area that that I just mentioned, financial health or economic health, we're very, very focused on that in our our community. And actually, we've been having this conversation, I guess, going on four years now at least, since Dr. Little has come in and and really gotten into our system and and looked at, looked at things. We started out with reducing our supply list, elementary teacher supply lists. That wasn't a board-approved fee, but it was a, a, you know, a cost of attending school. And so the charge by Dr. Little was to to reduce those significantly, and and that was done two years ago. Last year, we looked very closely at our middle school fees and then also at our technology center fees. And so there were several fees in those areas last year that were also reduced. And so this year, we started looking closely at our our elementary schools and our high schools. And we've identified these fees listed here for either reduction or elimination. The six-dollar consumables supply fee for kindergarten, we were proposing to be eliminated. Twenty-eight-dollar grade one through five consumable fee, we're proposing to be reduced to twenty dollars. And then at the high school level, we're proposing the five-dollar consumable fee be eliminated, the five-dollar language arts parallel reading fee be eliminated, and then the twenty-five-dollar parking fee be reduced to five dollars. So we we understand that, you know, this this can have a positive impact on our community at this time and the financial health of our our folks. And we also understand it was an important task of Dr. Little and and, you know, board members to be able to to look at this. So we're happy to be able to incorporate that into this first reading. Taking a look at our our projected revenue and the changes that we're anticipating are right now, our our local revenue, we're anticipating dropping about five point three million dollars. Of course, some of that is related to property tax collections and vehicle tax collections and things like that. It's also related to our investment income. I'm sure many of you are aware of your own investments, and you see how they're they're operating right now. We're, you know, in a similar situation. So we will, we anticipate less revenue next year than we have have had in the past. As I mentioned, the continuing resolution, you know, with the state, basically, we're getting the same allocation of revenue, or that's what we're projecting. And you say, well, Jeff, that's not the same. You have one seventy-four, and there's a one seventy-six. And you have eight point four five, or excuse me, five four five, and you have eight point five four three. The differences there are, those are the actual revenues that we have out, have received this year. And so on the left column, you see the approved budget revenue. We actually received more from the state this year than than we had budgeted. And so we're basing the budget on the received revenue for next year. You'll notice in the the final column there, the operational balance, this current year, we had proposed to use eight point two million dollars of fund balance. And in the upcoming budget, we're proposing to use three point seven million out of that operational balance. One of the things that Dr. Little tasked us with was trying to, you know, figure out a way to minimize that or to be more efficient and minimize that that operational balance. And then COVID nineteen hit. And we decided, you know, hey, if there's ever a time to to dip into your rainy day fund, this this would be such a time. So while we've reduced it, we are still showing some some use of that operational balance.
Mr. Salters, the, go back one, the state, so the difference in what was projected of the state and actual, it looks like it was from the penny sales tax set off from Act three eighty-eight is really where that, because it, in one of the charts, it looked like it was about a million two or something like that. That was the difference was. So essentially, we had more penny sales tax allocated to than what we were told by the state.
That's right. Okay, on the expenditure side, salaries and related costs. Our approved budget for two thousand and twenty was twenty, two hundred and fifty-eight million. And you're seeing proposed budget, FY twenty-one of two hundred and fifty-one million. I did mention that there were no, no raises incorporated into the budget currently. And I didn't say anything about anybody getting salary cuts either. So you're saying, where's the difference there? Well, there's, there's two reasons for that difference. The first reason is our base budget, overall base budget was lower at the start of this budget process. We've had some experienced staff members retire. And some staff members with less experience come in. And so those numbers balance out and can can generate some some lower numbers. But we're also, in in one of the strategies we're looking at to, you know, gain all of our operational efficiencies, is we're looking at a you know, gain all of our operational efficiencies, um, is we're looking at a, a fill ratio of our payroll. Historically, we budgeted our payroll at a hundred percent fill rate. Meaning that every position, uh, in the, in the budget was filled a hundred percent of the time or every day of the contract. And we, we typically have not achieved that hundred percent fill rate because you always have some turnover in staff. The highest fill rate that we've achieved in the last five, uh, years or so is 98%. And we did that, I think twice, and then it went down to like 95, 94%. And so we are budgeting at a 98% fill rate, um, for this upcoming budget. And so we, we're, we're going to monitor that each month very closely. And, and see how that, how that operates for us. But it, it, it does generate, um, a pretty significant savings when you're talking about, uh, you know, 2% of 260 million dollars. Programs and services, you see the reduction, um, there that, that we've already discussed. And so, uh, our total budget, uh, actually currently, um, represents a decrease of 8,022,405, um, going down from 295 million to 287 million. Just a breakdown of, um, how the budget is, is divvied up, if you will. You know, the state has some guidelines on salary and, and related cost percentages, instruction. How much of that money goes into instruction and we, we well exceed that. But you can see as, um, we know we are, we are in the people business. We, our resources are our teachers. They're the, they're the most valuable resource we have. And so you can see that's where the money, um, ends up being spent. Talking about Act 388 briefly, um, the millage rate for, um, 2020 is 322.4 mills. And the 2021 millage rate, um, is 308, um, point, uh, eight six. There's a calculation that's done that, that dictates how much we can go up on our, um, on our millage due to Act 388. And we could potentially go up 12.82 mills. The value of a mill is listed there 285, 445. So that would generate 3.6 million dollars. And, um, we are not recommending as part of this budget, a, a millage increase on the operations side. Obviously we have a lot of, uh, businesses struggling with the impact of COVID-19. And, and we don't feel like it's, um, appropriate, uh, for, for us to levy additional mills on them and increase their tax burden at, at this time for our operational budget. So just in summary, um, you know, again, our revenues remain at the, at the state, uh, level. And, um, our local projections have declined, um, some due to our, um, economic climate. And, uh, you know, some of the actual collection numbers that we're seeing. We are meeting our, our state and federal requirements. We do, we're in, you know, dealing with our inflationary costs. Or we are opening our, um, our schools that were identified in the 18 referendum building program restructuring and relocating those, those facilities. As I mentioned, it does not include a, a millage increase for operations. And, and just a reminder, um, that there's a budget amendment that will likely be necessary in the fall. Should the General Assembly pass some additional, uh, changes to the revenue. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Dr. Little, you might want to add some comments.
I do. Thank you, Mr. Salters. Really, I think as, uh, the finance team has, oh, sorry. Have you had that on your bingo card?
Card you just won. Really, we had, um, I think the conversation between, um, among the, the team, the finance, the principals and, and, uh, central services staff. What I think this budget does maybe more than anything else, um, is really prepares us for, as Mr. Salter started his presentation, for really potential budget cuts in the fall. And one of the things that we really struggled with was if we are increasing and adding for programs and the things that we think are important. And we think they are good for kids for sure. And then have to turn around and have to cut those very programs, um, with, with, uh, teachers in classrooms. Things already started that, that could really put, that could be a really big challenge for our schools. And so I think it's a, it's certainly a conservative approach, uh, to what could potentially be a really tough budget year. But I do think the budget overall puts us in, it really puts us in a, a strong position in the event that in September, there may be, you know, whatever the types of things happen when we have to. I don't want to start listing them, but, um, you know, there are budget cuts. We're prepared and, uh, we're, we're really anticipating some of those things right now. And then if there aren't those things, then the school district will be in even stronger shape in, in September. But that was really the thing. So, so the idea that really the continuing resolution thing may work for some people. But, uh, the truth is that we, we really don't think with all the, all the COVID-19 impact that we've had at least over the last nine weeks, 10 weeks. And we potentially continue to see over the summer that, um, it just didn't feel right for us to, 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 to present a budget that way. So you'll notice lots of, lots of really belt tightening. You know, we really, I, I really want to commend Mr. Salters. This is your first budget as CFO. And really where it's his, you know, or it's his baby from beginning to end. And I feel like, uh, they've done a, a real masterful job with this budget.
We can't hear.
Can you hear? Okay. Can you hear me now?
But we, all we can see is the PowerPoint screen as well.
Okay, they're fixing that, I think. And Mr. Salters, I'm enthusiastic about this budget. There are three things in it that I, that stand out that I really liked, um, to see kind of going down the sieve. The big thing is I'm, um, delighted to see that we're holding the millage firm, um, at this time for our community. I think that's, um, the appropriate and wise thing to do. Kind of going down the funnel. I really appreciate the, um, the way that you and your staff, um, focused on efficiencies and examining the line items and the, uh, historically what those line items and the budget have required and what they require going for, and just the adjustments that you've made there. I think, um, we, uh, giving you some breathing room to, um, to keep this budget tight. And then farther down in the funnel, as a parent, I'm delighted to see the, um, the parking fee reduction. I think that that is a, um, it's family friendly, especially as we're moving into the, uh, next year. And you're not knowing what the financial situation of our community is going to be. Um, I think that's something that benefits, you know, thousands of our students. Um, and so I'm really excited to see that. Um, I did want to make one comment, um, too. I remember this from last year. I, I think this question was asked last year, um, but it's particularly relevant, um, given the, um, on slide nine, the unemployment compensation, that $300,000 increase. That shows up in the budget report under the Board of Education Services. Um, and I remember last year, some of my, uh, the question was asked, why, um, that line item, that expense shows up in the Board of Education? Can you, um, illuminate that just a little bit?
I think you said illuminate that, right? Not eliminate that.
Illuminate like.
Expand upon that.
Explain why that expense is assigned in the BOE.
Okay, um, that, that, uh, assignment is based on the guides, uh, from the State Department of Education and, and where they recommend, um, those things being placed as well as our, uh, external audit firms.
Okay, thank you. It always looked a little out of place on the, um, Board of Education thing, but it makes sense because it's an, it's a district wide expense.
District wide expense, that's right.
And so the place to have it would be at the, at the top level of the budget.
That's right.
Thank you.
And, and since I said audit firm, and I'm going to take a minute to do a shameless plug. We didn't get an opportunity because we haven't done honors and achievements. But I, I did want to, uh, take a minute to let the board know that the, the finance team, uh, did receive, uh, yet another, um, outstanding, uh, comprehensive annual financial report recommendation. So, uh, won awards for the, the, this year's, uh, CAFR, um, yet again. And so, um, uh, David Cobb and Debra Seymour are here in the room. And I know, uh, Donna Patton, Lindsay Price are at home watching as well. We kind of drew straws and I told some of them, just stay home. I'm not sure what the room's going to look like. And so, but, but it's, it's a true testament to the work and effort of, of those folks. Tracy Lucas, um, and others in our, our finance office as well. That really, um, do the day-to-day work to make sure that, that these numbers, um, uh, are, are accurate and, um, and work with our teams at, at the school level as well. I mean, it's, it really goes down to the, the principals and the, um, the staff at school level too. So really pleased to, to bring that information to you tonight. And, um, we're, we're very blessed to have a really strong team, um, in finance. So I appreciate that. And I didn't mean to derail the questions, but just want to get that plug in there.
And Mr. Salters, that's, uh, what 23 or 24 years in a row?
I have to go back and look. I think it might be 24.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll have that number for you next week.
Yeah, and that's on not just outstanding performance, but transparency as well. So that's highly commendable.
Thank you.
And I would just like to say thank you. Could, we had a discussion about whether or not, how to handle the budget this year. And I do know that a lot of school districts are just passing a continuing resolution. And it's a lot of work to put this budget together, but I think it's so important because this year is not going to be like any year we've ever experienced. I think y'all are already shaking your head. It's already crazy, isn't it? So I just really appreciate the work and the thought that this, that financial teams put together with our principals, with Dr. Little, with Mr. Salters, because I think this year, this piece is going to be so, it's just going to be hard. And we need to do everything we can to protect our students and our learning environment and make sure that we are doing everything to always be the star that Lexington One has always been. And I appreciate you guys really looking hard at this budget and working, working with every penny. So thank you. Board members, are there any other questions or comments for Mr. Salters?
I have a question.
I was going to make an observation. Yeah, we're talking about the College Center and standing it up. But I mean, we have a lot of good programs, uh, that are up and running that I think the budget puts a spotlight on. And so I was doing some percentages and again, just looking at English as a second language. Uh, we spend about 1.1% of our budget on that. Autism, we spend 0.8% of our budget on that. Um, all of our handicap programs combined together, 3.3% of our budget. All of our disability programs combined together, that's one of the bigger kind of specialty niche needs is 4.2%. And then early intervention in our four-year-olds is 1.8%. So you add all that up for, you know, your non-traditional student that, uh, you know, just can't school can go through the normal workflow, that's 11.2% of our budget that we put toward children that need, you know, extra help in our classrooms. Obviously always have the gifted and talented and IB and AP, and that's around 1% of our budget. So again, it's, it's impressive, all the different ways we meet children where they are, um, to meet their needs, so.
Thank you, Dr. Price. I think Ms. Garris has a question. Ms. Garris?
Yes, um, when the state budget is passed, will we be considering a retroactive step increase for employees?
Yeah, okay. Ms. Garris asked, I'll just repeat it. When the state budget is passed, will be, will be, will we be considering a retroactive, um, step increase for all employees? And so Ms. Garris, it's my understanding that the, the state will, when they do this, um, budget session in, in the fall, that's what they're considering is whatever step increase it is, it would be for the, um, for the fiscal year. So it would be retroactive. That's what we would be looking at.
Okay, thank you. I did want to say also, I like, I'm, I'm actually, um, I'm liking a lot of this budget. I like how you went back and looked at budget to actual for past years and historical fill rate. I think that's, that's very important things in this 7.1 million dollar increase. I think if, if the board in past years had been looking at the budget to actual and historical fill rate, then this is the amount of money we, we could have been saving every year instead of transferring into the capital fund. So I'm very pleased with that, um, and the belt tightening and of course no millage increase. So, uh, I appreciate you going back and looking at all of that.
Thank you, Ms. Garris.
Mr. Salters.
Yes, sir.
So, one of the first things, you know, that, that a lot of myself and my, my small business colleagues did was at the beginning of the pandemic, we immediately instituted a budgetary freeze. Really just kind of hunkered down to, to get a bearing of, of how financially things were going to play out and, and to sort of better prepare in the event. We had, um, extended, uh, other costs, if you will, PPE, so on and so forth. Was there anything similar, uh, done with Lexington One in terms of, you know, sort of immediate budgetary freeze at the start of this?
I, I think that's a, that's a really, uh, good question. We actually, um, looked at some, uh, may, maybe a slightly different strategy. Can you hear me okay, Mr. Ryan? Okay, uh, we looked at maybe a slightly different strategy. Understanding what the budget outlook was going to be for this coming year. One of the things that we, we had our schools, uh, do was look at areas, um, you know, for the rest of this year where they may not be, uh, going to be able to expend funds. I'll give you a good example of that, and that is travel. And so where they had trips, um, uh, planned for, um, you know, well, dating back from March up and through, uh, June for professional development and other things. We had them look at those funds because we, we canceled all that travel. We allowed them to redirect that money, um, into, uh, purchasing supplies and materials, uh, for the upcoming year. Because we, we weren't sure exactly, and as, and as it is reflected in here, a, a supply cut for next year. We felt like they needed to do some, um, kind of pre-purchase, um, in anticipation of some of the cuts for next year. So, um, we kind of did a hybrid of what you're talking about. So we, we did, um, you know, kind of pause some things, but then some other things we allowed, allowed the schools and departments to transfer some money around, um, to, to try to go ahead and pre-purchase some things, um, in anticipation that, that next year, um, it may not be as, as, um, optimistic as we would hope.
And, and I guess kind of where I'm going with that is if, if we look at our, our sort of fiscal year to date, you know, we're at about 83% of the fiscal year, yet our expenses reflect around 67% utilization. So the natural thought would be, we must have, you know, um, we must have kind of, kind of hunkered down there for a minute. Unless, um, we expect to have some, some fairly high expenses going into, uh, May and June, like a, a balance transfer or something along those lines that may would account for that. Is, is there any reason for the lag, the 83 versus 67, if you will?
Um, I mean, certainly with us not being in school, um, there, there's a, a natural, um, uh, lag, if you will. You're going to see a, a slowdown in power bills. You're going to see a slowdown in water consumption. You know, different things that, that are monthly expenditures that are going to contribute to that lag. But, uh, but you also do have some things in our budget, um, that are, uh, annualized costs that may renew, um, you know, at the end of the, um, at the end of the year. So, so you may have a license, a big software license renewal, uh, maintenance contract on, um, I think our, uh, all of our switching and network gear, um, renews at the end of the year. And so, um, there, there's some things like that that hit that are kind of one-time-a-year costs, uh, that will contribute to that, uh, to some degree. But, but certainly, um, you know, in, in general terms, our schools obviously have not been, um, uh, you know, purchasing at the volume that they would have normally this time of year. So we have seen a, a slowdown as a result of that.
And, and my question would be, um, so it, it looks like the main driver for our, our decrease of the budget. If you look at the, at the total budget, the main driver appears to be revenue, uh, decrease in revenue, um, as opposed to expense. And so with property tax and, and, you know, historically property tax being a very stable form of income. And so with property tax and, and, you know, historically property tax being a very stable form of income, and especially us being a, a growing market like we are in Lexington County. Have, has anyone at Lexington County given you an idea of why we expect such a, a decrease in property tax associated with our local source revenue?
One of the, one of the things that you'll, you, you don't see on this slide, but you, you may can pick up in the, the individual sheet that was downloaded in the PDF, the, the revenue, the breakdown revenue document is you'll see, I'm hoping you were able to access those documents, Dr. Guyton. If not, we'll, we'll make sure you get a copy of them. The, the tax levies that were, were the first line item in that sheet that I'm talking about. You'll see a, a, a $3 million decrease in that tax levy. And, and you know, that's a, that's a decrease reflected in, in last year. When that budget was developed, you know, the, the projection was a 66.7 million dollar revenue estimate. And we, we have this year collected around 63 million. So what we, what we did is we realigned that revenue with, with what we actually collected. So I wasn't willing to go off of just a budget number. I really wanted to base it, you know, on, on our true collection number. And, and Ms. Seymour in our, in our office really worked hard to, to, to get these numbers together. And we talked through that and that's, that's where we were comfortable. So, you know, we, we could budget, if you go back and look at trends over the last few years, and I could pull that for you. But you're probably going to see that, that number consistently over collection, budgeted over collection. And, and so we just, we just try to true that up. So, you know, not all of that is a result of, you know, the COVID impact or the economic impact. It's, it's a result of, of our work to, to align that, that projection with the actual collection, if that makes sense.
It does. Thank you, Mr. Salters.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Salters?
Like to say thanks to Jeff because I know how difficult it is for not just principals, but everybody in the school system. When you got to go in September and October and cut a budget, that's very, very painful. So I appreciate your foresight on that and looking into the future. And hopefully, hopefully we won't have to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Oswald. Mr. Salters, will you remind us on the schedule for the next budget reading and where we go from here?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for that, that prompt. I'll, I'll be happy to do that. So we will conduct second reading of the budget on our June 2nd board meeting. I believe it is the date of that meeting. And then we will conduct third reading, we'll have a budget hearing at the June 18th. It's the 18th, right? Not, somebody help me. Yeah, the 18th. June 18th meeting. And we will do a budget hearing at that meeting and then you guys will actually take a vote and, and on the, on the budget at that, at that meeting. I'm sorry, it's the 16th Tuesday, which is your regularly scheduled board meeting in June.
Great, okay. Thank you, Mr. Salters, and that will not be a Zoom meeting. It will be a regular meeting. We will not be zooming after tonight unless something crazy happens. And we will have a regular meeting. And I just would like to remind our constituents that we are here, that you, if you have questions, comments, concerns about the budget, you may call us, email us, text us, or come in person and address the whole board or send us a letter. So we welcome hearing from our constituents. Thank you, Mr. Salters, and thank you, financial team, for all that you did to put that together.